All right, I'd like to call the meetings over.
Thank you. Has there been a declaration of public notice?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I missed the whole thing.
Okay, fine. No, there's nothing.
There's nothing?
There's nothing for you to have noted.
You get a chance to really make something up.
Nah.
Okay, I got it. I'm on my way to teach now.
Any issues, any changes to your business?
No.
Okay. Public appearances? Any public appearances? No public appearances. Next, I'd like approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Recognition information.
We have three recognitions this evening that I'd like to announce. First grade teacher Kelly Ferris and athletic national therapist Kate Manenga. Each received $100 grants from the MIMIC Foundation to purchase supplies for their classrooms. Also, second grade teacher Beth Schiffer Decker received a grant to purchase diverse books for Kaya Grove School. And the MIMIC Foundation has a passion for education and community, improving the classroom environment for students and teachers alike. We've had several of our teachers over the years that have received grants from the Foundation, certainly very appreciative of that. Secondly, we have a student recognition this evening. Menona Grove High School senior Ally Dorn has committed to UW-Madison for women's track and field. Ally won her first state title last June and was named the 2018 Wisconsin State Journal Wisconsin Prep Zone All Area Girls Track and Field Athlete of the Year. And then, lastly, another teacher recognition. Winnequa music teacher Ben Ferris was selected as the bass coach for the youth middle level state honors orchestra. He was selected because of his exemplary teaching abilities, performing talents, and commitment to young musicians. Again, very, very proud and privileged that we have Ben in our district as a music teacher.
Thank you. Anything else? Susan?
Yeah, so, and most of you already know about this. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but this was, I'm actually reading this out of the state journal. The article actually in the Iowa paper spoke even more about our former Menona Grove athlete, Tore Young. In the game on September 15th, he had 14 carries for 82 yards and a score, number 20, in case you missed that. And we had four MG grads attending the game last Saturday night. And he also played Saturday night and did extremely well. It just didn't take advantage of all their opportunities, right? We did, so what can you say? Anyway, that's really exciting when you pick up the paper and they write about somebody you don't know.
I have another one to add, which is that the Wisconsin Public Education Network, which we have supported for quite a while and some of us have been involved with in the beginning, was awarded a Friend of Education Award this year by DPI and received it from Superintendent Evers at the State of Education address on the 20th of the Capitol. So that's pretty neat. And there is, I'll do that with announcements, I'll do that with announcements.
Yep.
Okay, that's next. I'll announce it. There's an upcoming, that organization along with GROMES, Grand Friends United for Public Schools, Madison Public Schools, and some other organizations are hosting a legislative forum, but not for people who are running, just a legislative forum coming up in October, October 24th. And so I'll have another meeting where I can announce it, but if you're interested, I want to mark here. Well, actually, we have a board meeting, so never mind. Okay, anyway, the point of it was to ask them real specific questions about their thoughts on education. And so I've been involved in the planning and coming up with questions, but I will be able to attend it because we have a board meeting, which I forgot. For other people, hopefully they'll be people who will attend it. Thank you, that's all.
Okay.
Well, see, the Tore Young and the game, they never once mentioned Menona Grove. They talked about him a lot and like all the other players were like, this guy's from here, this guy's from there, and Tore never got a, they never got a Menona Grove in there.
All right, well, let's see what we can do about that.
I'll tweet him.
We just have to, next time we go to Iowa City, we'll have to find someone and remind.
Okay, correspondence and announcements?
I have none.
Susan, you had something you wanted to say?
I know, I already.
Okay. Okay, that takes us to administrative reports, and we'll start with Jeff with the high school activity report.
Okay. What I've shared with you guys is our, if, your end report that I used to give you was kind of a different look. This year, what I thought I would do was just kind of buy the numbers. So it's kind of a one-page synopsis as far as what actually kind of gets done in my duties, I guess. And you can look at it by fall, winter, spring, just from the athletics and activities. On the backside of the page, it's kind of broken down by our sports seasons, take a look at our participation numbers, along with how we're doing in the classroom and stuff. And the year-end report for activities and athletics that I've done in the years previous will be forwarded to the email so you can take a look at those accolades and artifacts that we're having there. As you look at these numbers, if there's any questions on, anybody have any questions on that part of it?
Here. The numbers for fall and spring are 350 and 400, and winter is 190. That's probably because of the various sports have, basketball, we've got five players on the floor, is that the difference there is? Or there are fewer options?
No, there's the same number of options in all sports seasons now. We used to have, winter used to be kind of the shorter or the smaller of the options available, but we've kind of grown to about seven sports each fall, winter, and spring. But what Dean's sitting on is exactly right. We're seeing large numbers in our cross-country in the fall, but we also in our football program as well. In the spring, it moves to our track programs are starting to bring in larger numbers and stuff. So that's where they're seeing that. Otherwise, we're seeing pretty true numbers on different specific sport teams, such as, you know, your basketball programs will have a smaller number. For instance, soccer in the fall will have 24 is your maximum tournament roster that you have on. So that's where our teams will sit around like 18 or so, and then that'll kind of bring some kids up for tournament play. I thought it'd be interesting to show the numbers in terms of our fine arts, the kids that are participating along those lines. Also note that in some of our fine arts and our club activities, those numbers, those are also sport kids as well, and vice versa as you look at those numbers. So I think there is still room, we're still pushing on our students to get involved in something. So with a snapshot like this, it'll be interesting to take a look and see how we do next year in terms of if we have some world to get more kids involved in some things. But we had a good kickoff to the start of our school year with our activity fair. It kind of jumped, you never know how that's going to go, but we had a pretty active comments, and a lot of kids looking to get involved in stuff. So a lot of good energies around our involvement and things. But tonight, what I wanted to do is I wanted to bring some students with. I've had a great opportunity to be a part of a team with some of our students here. So I'm going to, they got some gifts for you guys, so I'm going to let them start with that, and then we'll kind of fall back and they can tell you what their real purposes were.
So we just have a message for you as a team, and then for the new members, we have a pin, and you can read it. It's like, "I make a difference," and it's a quote from Helen Keller.
I'm James. Nice to meet you, James.
I'm taking this to more for sure.
This is brilliant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Savannah, nice to meet you. Savannah, thank you very much.
So these are seniors, three of our four seniors that represent our sportsmanship team at the high school. And I'm going to let them kind of talk and kind of explain what we do, and how we kind of go about doing it, and kind of what our purpose is. But like I said, I get a chance to be a part of their enthusiasm and kind of their creativity, and kind of look through their lens as they look at how we build sportsmanship through our district. So go ahead.
Yeah, so our team started a couple, two years ago. Now, we started with only four people, and we went to a conference and we learned a lot about sportsmanship and how to implement that throughout the school, and what to do with the community to be involved. And since those two years, we've joined new members, and we now have at least three people from each grade. So I'd say that's a step forward, and we focus on our four talents, leadership, spirit, community, and commitment. And we do activities for each of those, and we like to really get involved in the school. I can help them explain some of the specific activities that we do.
Some of the new things that we're planning on doing this year is cross-guard appreciation, where we bring a gift to the cross-guards because they don't get the recognition that they always deserve. And then another thing that we're doing this year is, yeah, bus driver appreciation, where we go out to Nelsons and we bring a cake for all the bus drivers, and they really enjoy that.
All right, another big thing we like to do is we'll go to the smaller schools, like the middle school, elementary school. And we help out with games, activities, and stuff like that, and just try to be a presence in the other school, and show them that we're there. And we all just kind of help with everything. We do a thing at GDS where we go down and we like, it's about midway through the year, we help the eighth graders and we show them like, all the activities you can do at high school, and just to get them thinking about it.
And I think some of my favorites were, we do like, we have suckers at home games, and we put a sportsmanship quote on the sucker, and then we, it's not, you don't have to pay for it, we just give you the sucker as you walk in and say what we are, what we do, and then the parents and other students really enjoy that. And I think for me, like, the most I got out of this was seeing, at the beginning of the group, when we first started, a lot of people were like, "What's the salt team? Like, what's the sportsmanship team?" And they didn't really know what we were about. But in the years, they're like, "Oh, yeah, we know what that is now because you guys do things throughout schools." And I think that's really cool to see that a lot of people are knowing what we do know, and we're getting more involved and that like that. And then the homecoming visits are really fun as well, because we get the captains from other teams, and we go to Winnequa and the other elementary and middle schools. And we just spread our school sphere, and the little kids love it. They love seeing all the big football players and like giving them high fives and things, and that's really cute, so.
Some of my favorite things that we did last year were, we went to the Milwaukee Bucks game where there was a big conference, and they talked about sportsmanship and leadership. And then another thing we did last year was we went and gave a present to the janitors and took a picture and just let them know how much they do for us and that we actually appreciate it.
I really like it all. I think it's fun doing all this stuff and really being part of the community.
And again, on my end of it, it's kind of stepping stones. So as these guys build their confidence and get ready to leave their experiences at the high school, it's an opportunity to put them in front of some of the smaller things that they can do, and kind of teach them that they just got to get started to do it. And so as they find it and do it, these are our seniors, so they've kind of went through a lot of these different activities and stuff, and as they build their way, they kind of leave the rest of our group kind of with that experience. And also, there's an opportunity for the younger ones to kind of build in what they want to do as well. So as we get started with this school year, we're still forming and kind of getting behind our dates and kind of getting the focus on some things, but these guys kind of really lead that. And my involvement in it is just to get them here and let them do what they do. So why don't you introduce yourself, though, just kind of tell them what your involvement is.
I'll start. I'm Savannah. I do not do sports this year, but I have been involved in volleyball, soccer, and gymnastics at the high school. My experiences with sports was very good. I also do key clubs, Spanish club, and DECA, and I do a lot of things outside the school as well.
I'm Trenton Bearrew. I play football and baseball, and this is currently the only cobbler in.
I'm James Giftis. I run cross-country and track. I'm part of DECA and so.
Well, thank you.
Susan?
Jeff, I just want to add too, it was pretty amazing. And you could see that this was built into the culture of the students. And I've already spoken about the sandbag, but the truth is, the kids who came down there and helped, and some people came every day, often by themselves, and just stayed, and then would even get in a truck and help unload, getting them to homes. I mean, they saved several of our elderly homes just by just coming and doing it and getting out there. And again, the football team came twice and actually clearly saved a home. And broke up into groups, the swim team, and then there were just lots of students who just came and helped. And it was clearly because they wanted to be there to help. And that's a spirit that clearly we're seeing that you're breeding, and it's part of the fabric of what you do with these kids, and it's impressive.
Thanks, Ramon.
Thank you.
Savannah, you have to get a touch with her.
All right, next we'll have Jared talking about the third Friday and capital projects.
All right, so we'll start with the third Friday enrollment count. So what's attached is actually our enrollment as of Friday. So last Friday, the 21st, was our third Friday count. And what the third Friday count does is it allows us to, that number is used to help calculate the three-year rolling average for our revenue limits, which is the driving force behind the majority of the revenue that the district receives between property taxes and equalization aid. The report also shows you the number of sections that we have at each of the buildings, per grade level, what that average class size looks like, and then we list out the Board of Education guidelines and their class size goals. Right now, we are at 3,457 students. And I say this is a preliminary report because there's a lot of checking that we have to do. This is all students that are in our, are in seats as of Friday. For example, we received a new student today, which we don't get to count because they came after the third Friday. But the other part of it is, is all schools start reporting this, and so where we believe there are students that have potentially open enrolled out of our district, we're getting notifications if they even showed up there or not, and then we have to follow through. But the 3,400, 3,457 students are actually students that are in our seats in 4K through 12. That doesn't include any of our part-time students that are coming. It does include full-time open enrollment students. So we will continue to modify this. The report is due to DPI at the beginning of October.
So who gets the one kid that moved in today?
The resident district that they came from.
Did they come from a district or a territory?
I don't know that. Any questions on the enrollment side of things? All right, the second item that was on my report tonight is the capital projects board report. And I'm pleased to say that I did finally get a list uploaded to Bortox this late afternoon. What the list shows is the projects that we have been able to complete. There are two projects that we have not completed, and those are indicated in red that we're waiting for material or access points to be able to continue those. But right now, we had approved a budget of $650,000. Part of the reason that we had that $650,000 was part of the 2016 operational referendum. And some of these things would not have been able to be done if we did not have that operational referendum. So we went from, I'm just shy of a $300,000 capital budget to 650 due to that operational referendum.
Any questions for Jared?
So the replaced roof on the press box, is that, that's not going to interfere with us redoing the press box?
No, we had to replace it. It was completely raining into the press box, all electronics and stuff. So it wasn't necessarily something that we wanted to have to replace, but we did have to because we couldn't patch it.
Dean?
What year are you reporting on for the operational referendum? Is year three, four?
We are coming into year three.
This is reporting the expenditures in year three.
Correct.
All right, thank you very much, Jared. Superintendent's report, Dan?
Okay, three items. The first is just to report out on our annual fall superintendent's conference. For many years, it was always sponsored by DPI, now it's co-sponsored with WASDA, our superintendent's association. So I put on there, I gave you a link to the actual booklet for the program, and I just picked three of the ones I thought might be of interest to the board. If you see something else in the booklet that you would like to know more about, I can send you, you know, those slides as well. But the one in particular, I just wanted to mention, the slides from the presentation from Ernest Morrell from University of Notre Dame. I really, that really struck a chord with me. It is so aligned with the work that we're doing in our district about where literacy fits into our equity work. And so it's something that I've already shared out with some of our members of our admin team, and, but again, it is, part of it was, again, reaffirming the work that we're doing, but really the message was, it was directed towards the superintendent about the idea of leadership. That, not that we're all, I'm certainly not a literacy expert, we have many of those in the district, but, you know, where does that fit in the overall big picture? And so it really struck home. So I thought that the conference, all in all, was really good. I added a little bit of the updates, both at the federal and state level. The state, you're well aware, WSB and other, you know, groups give us plenty of information as well. A little bit of perspective from John Forster, maybe a little bit different slant. But, and then the federal things that we oftentimes don't pay close attention to. Overall, the report is kind of good news that, I try to not be political in how I report on that, essentially no major changes, which is generally a good thing. And so, and some of the things that might have been proposed by the administration that we wouldn't support did not get through. So I guess that's kind of the overall summary at this point at the federal level, so. Okay, secondly, the second round of the safety grant, and I think you've got previous reports, but I just wanted to spell it specifically again, what was in the grant, almost $190, $1,000. And so a little bit of additional physical things, followed from the first, you know, that we're able to do with regard to the window, the shatterproof things, and our notification system, we're able to use some of the money towards that. But more importantly, in the second round, is for professional development, specifically in the areas of mental health and crisis intervention. So again, this is very much aligned with the work that we're doing, that Krista leads a lot of that work, and it's going to allow us to provide a little bit of, you know, some additional things to support that. And so again, really excited about, certainly anytime we get grant money, it's appreciated, but we really think that we are able to direct it to very positive things, you know, for us. So really pleased with that piece. And then the third, I won't read through the bullet point, just to keep you, you know, informed again with our referendum communications. And again, ongoing, you know, the meetings, the literature that's being sent out, both electronically and physical mailings. And so again, I guess I'll stop if anyone has any questions on any three of those items.
Susan?
I just wanted to ask a little bit more. I was actually talking to a person that, an individual that works in the connections group, that's like the journey group. And she was talking about how they're, because of the things that are going on in the school districts, the, that quote, accidental shooting on the bus, and the patrolling immigration, that that was affecting students, and they were seeing that in the group. So I really appreciate that we're working on crisis intervention and recovery and whatever identification processes we're using when we see kids are anxious or they're anxiety. And then we're actually training staff, right, to help identify them, because you can't be everywhere.
Yeah, I appreciate saying that, Susan. I think, you know, without getting into specifics, the big picture is exactly that. We know, you know, and I think if you had a chance to check your email, the board was copied and something went out to staff. And so many of the things, as you mentioned, are so about us making sure that we have an opportunity for staff to develop relationships, not only with our students, but as well as their families. And we have just some unbelievably talented and caring staff that do that, so it's our job to facilitate that work. And then, you know, the biggest challenge is when it goes beyond the scope of what we can provide direct services for, you know, can we find resources and referrals and work with partnerships? And we know that's the area that there's a lot of the work to do, that we really need, you know, more help. But it's part of what we're doing in-house with our staff, yeah, very pleased, but, and again, this additional support is very welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Board reports, policy, Susan?
Were you going to say anything about the referendum communication as part of your report? I just had a question about that.
Sure.
Which is, the, in terms, are you getting the kind of assistance that you need from board members in terms of the event list, for example? I haven't looked at it recently, so I don't know. I know when I looked at it, I was kind of disappointed to see there were only four things I could even fit in my calendar. One of them didn't work. But I, I'm just wondering if there's, if there's more that you think we could be, should be doing in terms of informational pieces, since that is the role of the district, given thoughts on that or things that we should be showing up at?
I think certainly having a presence at events as much as possible is a positive thing, but probably more importantly, just the conversations that you have with constituency in any form, whether it be a formal, you know, setting or informally. And that, you know, if, and just continuing those, you know, I think all of our board members are, do a lot of that already. I guess the other thing I would add would be feedback. If there are things that you're hearing that perhaps, you know, we have our FAQ, but if some things need to be more clearly explained, or things that aren't on there, that questions that come up, and some of you have been doing that, you know, please shoot myself, Katie, an email, and then it might be a matter of updating the FAQ, it might be a matter of making that a point of emphasis the next time we do a presentation. So I think that constant feedback. But I think the events, you know, I don't know that, I would say that it's critical that we have to have more presence. I think anything you do is kind of a, I would say a bonus, or, you know, that way, so.
I have had some very positive feedback on the mailings. People really, I mean, I've just, a couple people sent that, but very impressed with the quality and the fact that they're very visible, and they feel like we're really doing a good job getting the word out. And I heard some compliments about your presentation at the Optimus from some people that, you did an excellent job explaining and answering questions, so. So that's, I think, I think the mailings have been great, too, so I just wondered. Okay.
Yep. Just as a reminder, the next, tomorrow night is the parent-teacher conferences at Winnequa. It's good if somebody could go, unfortunately I've got to, well, let's see, what time is that? I may be able to make it early.
But I'll be there as soon as I can.
Actually, what time is that?
I think it starts at 3:00.
3:00.
3:00 to 7:00 or something. I know, I got to be there at 3:15, so it's around there. I have a conflict tomorrow.
Probably till 7:00? I don't know for certain.
And we will have, will there be a sign up, I assume?
Yeah, so those events, even if we don't have a board member or staff member there, we have, you know, our banners available, we have the fact sheets available for people, you know, so that.
It's, it's great.
And the display boards.
It's great, though, if you can be there to talk to somebody and answer questions about it.
It is, yeah.
Have a person there, it's effective.
I did sign up for Taylor Prairie, which is later, but I have a conflict tomorrow.
And the parent-teacher conferences tend to get a lot of traffic, so engage people, so it's a good thing to do, so if somebody can, and I know there's nobody, well, I don't know if anybody signed up for it, the older version of the event calendar, I don't have anybody on it.
So if we could go over there even for a period of time, see, that's, again, I mentioned this to Katie, too. In the committee that we had before, it was pretty clear if you were there, kind of, you were handing out a, you at least had the handouts in your hand, and you were handing out the handouts, and then it would generate discussions from people who might be taking them and were saying, "Oh, well, I want to know more about this, and I want to know more about that." And it kind of, by having the handouts with a, kind of bridge that people just kind of walking by you. I don't know where your thoughts are about that.
Yeah, I think one of the differences is now everybody's received these, so they've received them by mail, so to me, having a table there with them on it, and you sitting there with a sign next to it.
Yeah, I wouldn't hand them out, because we've done more direct mailing, so the information is out, it's just extra copies for people that.
Okay, so if I'm going to a parent-teacher conference and I'm in a hurry, and I have a 3:15, and there's somebody sitting at a table over there, and I don't really know what they're doing, that, that won't necessarily interchange. I, I may not have any interchange. But when I was standing at the music program, and I was just saying hello to people as they came in, and I had the brochure, the thing in my hand, that generated discussion. So I think if you have guidance that, I mean, if you swam, you sit at a table, fine, anybody can do that, so that would be good.
You're volunteering.
Yes.
Just saying, that generates the giving of information.
The question I've seen talking to people in the community is, you know, sort of one of urgency, why do we need to do this now? And in that sense, be able to talk about that is, I think, a good, a good place. And in that sense, be able to talk about that is, I think, a good, a good place to be. All right, now why don't we go on to the policy committee?
All right, well, I have almost a non-report. We met Tuesday, the 18th, and talked about several policies, but we didn't take any action on any of them, since there's some more work needed. And there was, kind of we mentioned before, the equity in education, student privacy, parental access to information, there were just some questions that we had, we want to work on them more, public requests, suggestions, complaints was another one. The one that we did work on finishes on tonight's agenda, so I'll talk about that more when we get to that policy, 8319, public records, it's on the agenda for first read. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 9th at 9:00 AM.
Next, the action items. The first is the cash flow borrowing for the new members every year. The state's payments come in at irregular intervals, actually, what is it, quarterly? We get transfers of, of our tax and state aid monies, and in between those, we have to pay the bills, and in order to do that, we, every year, we have to authorize a cash flow borrowing, which is what this is. And so this is something we, we do every year. So I'd like a motion for approval of the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed $6 million issuance of tax revenue anticipation promissory notes and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved into second, seconded discussion? Okay, we need a roll call vote, so roll call starting with Dean.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next is the teacher compensation plan revisions. Dean, do you want to talk about these, or Dan, do you want to talk about these?
I'll start, and then the committee can chime in. So we have just two very minor revisions to the teacher compensation plan, and this is based upon discussion at the last committee meeting, which was really based upon discussion that we had in a meet and confer session, you know, prior to that. And as you recall, every fall, we have an application period, actually it's December, for our Level Four advancement. And so one of the questions that has come up is, there was a, when the initial plan was adopted, the requirement was for teachers to have a master's degree in order to be eligible for Level Four advancement. However, with the plan being new and transition, that was waived for the first three years. And so the question has come up that, well, what about the teachers who were applied under that waiver, but their plan or their application was not approved, may they resubmit? And the committee agreed to recommend that, yes, that should be allowed. And so it's one very minor change in the plan, just to clarify that, but we need the action now, because we'll be notifying staff here shortly about, you know, the application coming up in December. So that's really the only substantive change, it's really just a clarification. The second piece has no impact right now, but it kind of sets the table for future discussions with regard to the idea in salary level minimums. We have minimum salaries at each of the levels, and we talked about the goal at, within Level Three, since that's, you know, such a wide range of teachers and experience, that we would like to have some minimum salary at certain levels. So we want to get it on the record, at least as a starting point at years 10 and 15, and the salaries are in there are the actual minimums that we're paying right now. Our goal is to increase those, but at least we have it into the plan, something to work off of moving forward.
This would be 10 and 15, within the, the green area.
Yeah, so it'd be total years of teaching.
It's not beginning area.
Correct.
It's, it's, it's after the teacher would have five years of experience at a minimum, anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, Susan?
Well, I was just going to mention, too, that one of the reasons that teachers talked about this was that it was really difficult. Remember, we brought the, the newer teachers up, and then we ended up with this group in the middle, and part of it was just this feeling of not really knowing always kind of where they're going to be. And hopefully this step will, don't you think, Dean, the intent was to add stability to the structure for them, so that they could feel more comfortable in a more structure, a little more structure?
Yeah, it is, it is an effort to give some predictability within that, within that category, but I think we have to have some caution in, in expanding that, because it, it cuts into our flexibility to address other issues with limited resources, too.
Well said, yeah.
And the balance.
Part of our goal, I know when we worked on that plan way back, was that that Level Three would be a professional level that people could live in, that not everybody should feel they had to go to Level Four, so this has boosted that direction, too, so, yeah, I see it.
Right.
Motion?
Yeah, whoops, let me get back to that page, sorry. So, teacher compensation plan, there we go. So I'd like a motion for approval of the rise teacher compensation plan as presented?
So.
Been moved, and.
I'll second.
Jeff seconded it.
But I want to say something before I move.
Sure, of course, we always have time to discuss, discussion.
Right, it's somewhat off topic, but I had a discussion recently on social media with our friends at Will, the law firm, Bradley Funded Law Firm for School Choice, and they just put out a big study saying that the wonders of Act 10 allowed districts to go to a merit pay based system, and they used our district as an example. And I just wanted to, on record that we do not have a merit pay based system, we have a different system.
Yeah, and I can add a little bit more clarification where that came from. I actually was contacted by a media, someone from media in a district in northern Wisconsin, or in an area in northern Wisconsin, who read that report and wanted some clarification. Our board policy states that the board may choose to have compensation based on that, and that was what was cited in the report, not that we are, it's just simply that you have the ability. In fact, that policy statement, I believe, was in place, I mean, way before Act 10.
That was in the bargaining agreement, that, I mean, there was language.
Okay, yeah, I take that, it may be not be policy, it might be handbook.
I'm pretty sure it was, and we had the, that there was an option to pay additional, I can't remember how it was.
I think you're right.
But it's been around.
And it moved into the handbook, and something to affect the discretion of the board.
The, the president of these, this crazy firm, said that because we have steps where you can obtain by reaching higher levels of education and stuff, that makes it a merit pay.
Oh, really? Okay, I was sort of aware of that.
I said, well, that was happening, that was, that was before the step plan system, if you got more education, you've moved up to step one.
Right.
So that doesn't make no sense.
Okay, cool.
He voted for it, so.
I see.
That article said they were, the board reserves a right to pay above the pay schedule for merit pay.
Yeah, so that was the one statement that was cited.
That's really, you know, could be taken out of context. When they, when they listed as, you know, Minotaur Grove School is, is merit pay, that's not, they're not, they're saying the board reserve, we have it in our policy, it says we reserve the right to do that, which we haven't done.
At the point I was saying, that, that study is flawed, we are not a merit pay based system.
Merit pay.
Okay, Dean?
Merit pay would imply some annual discretion.
Right.
That we have a discretion to create a structure. And I, I think the, I think the board ought to be, ought to be aware that the current salary structure does provide some flexibility by the committee and the board to, to address the varying issues of attracting and retaining teachers through the compensation system that, that could get lost if it, if it went to a more structured, more structured system. So I, I think we, I think at this point, while there is, if I were a teacher, I would see some inability to predict where I would be, but, but on the other hand, we have, we have a capacity to address the issues of attract and retain within that structure that we might not have had if it is completely structured. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Okay, now we can vote, I'm good. I just wanted that on public.
Anyone else in the other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Or all opposed? Motion carries. Next is first reading of the policy, access to public records.
Sure, so as we have received, you know, we receive public record requests from time to time, and when we adopted the Neola policy manual, we adopted their language, and we found some challenges with, you know, following through with the policy, based the way that, following through with requests based on policy. So in working with Boardman and Clark, we recommended actually going back to the policy that we had in place, that was actually written by Boardman and Clark in, working with the district, updated it slightly, and, and so it's just much, I think it's easier to follow, makes it very clear, both to, not only to the public about the process for records requests, but also for myself and others who need to actually administer that and, to fulfill those requests. And so I think it's a much more user-friendly and up-to-date legal document, so that was kind of the rationale behind the, the change.
I think the layout is much more clear, and the old policy didn't even designate who the custodian was, legal custodian of records, it's just, all the information is much more clear in this policy, it's much better written, was our thought.
One concern I had is that the old policy had this paragraph, nothing that's policy, talked about board members' responsibilities, nothing this policy should be construed as preventing board member from inspecting the performances or duties, any record of the district, et cetera. That was in the old policy, and similar, I didn't find similar language in the new policy.
Do you want to send that to us, so we can?
It's in, it's, well, it's in the Word docs.
It's in 8310, on the second page.
It's in 8310, and, but let me, it's, so it's in this.
It's first paragraph on page two.
First, yeah, I, I saw that in there, but I kind of glossed over it, because I didn't think it was that substantial.
I actually, the attorney who done this with us, actually I'm meeting with him tomorrow morning on a different matter, I could ask for a clarification, might, I believe that that statement would be one of those, it's not a policy statement, that's actually a right, I mean, that's covered whether it's in the policy or not, as far as board members certainly have different rights than other public members.
Yeah.
And that's typically what we find with a lot of the Neola policies, there's a lot of unnecessary language, that's just repeating statutory language and so on.
Right, and that, actually, that is, if, I mean, if it's something that's in the law, then we don't have to care, cover it in policy.
That'd be my assumption, but I'll confirm that.
And my, and I haven't, I haven't listened up, but my understanding is the guidelines that, that board members of a school district can't be, you know, you have to waive the fees, for example, if it's a board member who's requesting the data. But I believe it's in the law, but I would have to go back and look if there are references.
Yeah, and I think there would be a difference, requesting it as, in your duties as a board member, is very different than requesting public member, public records as an individual.
Well, it's.
I think would be the line, differentiating line.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Yeah, I, it'd be worth asking if we should put that back in. We do have some statements and policy that are in law that we've put in there just to inform people. I don't know that this would be necessary, because I assume it is in law, but it'd be worth asking about it.
Right.
Just highlighted and asked.
Yeah, and I haven't a time, I have to go back and look at, I have to look at the law and make sure that we're, we're, we do everything that, the law does everything that we want to do, and there isn't anything that we want to, the statements we want to make, board access. Dean?
I have a question, Dan. The, the access question, maybe you can, maybe you can address this. It seems to me that recent events, that these highlighted to me, that teachers being on the front line of some of these requests, what, what role and what responsibility do teachers have as compared to the, the higher level? To some extent, are they, are they responsible for responding to the public for all requests, even repeated requests?
No, teachers' responsibility is solely in communicating with parents about their child or their, and teachers' students, and so providing parents with the information relevant to their child's education in that class is where their responsibility starts and ends. So anything beyond that, that would be considered public records, is handled through my office.
So if a request for lecture notes or PowerPoints and those kinds of things, is that public record?
We have to make a determination, in fact, so we do have a different policy regarding instructional materials and, and inspection of those, in fact, our committee's working on that right now. But that's one of the determinations that needs to be made, is it instructional material that would be something that we would share with parents as part of, you know, their right to know about their child's education versus, is it a public record?
There's a delicate boundary between.
There is.
Between the two, because it would seem to me there is, on the one hand, there is some responsibility to respond to parents in a public school system, but there is also, there also should be some limits on that for excessive demands at the, at least at the instructional level, the teaching, the teaching level, without some kind of early and systematic review by the immediate supervisor and superintendent, and I suppose the board at some point.
Yeah.
And it, how do we, how, how do you feel about where we are in that?
I think we, we do need to clean up our policy language to provide some clarity, and we are working on that. Ultimately, if it goes beyond what the, a reasonable expectation as far as a teacher and sharing, I mean, it goes on to the administration, so one of our policies states that, you know, requests need to go through the principal, you know, versus the teacher, and that's something that we've always instructed teachers, if there's any concerns, work through your principals and.
So it sounds like to me that if a teacher would feel like there is excessive or, or too broad of concern about this, that that request would go ultimately to the principal of the school, who could then, and I guess your policy would address it through administrative rule or something.
Correct.
Of whether the principal makes that decision or refers it on to you to at least validate that decision.
Exactly, yes.
Is that, is that the way you anticipate it to be?
Yes.
Because I really think we need to, I think we really need to address the need to address their professional responsibility, time and energy on unusual and excessive requests for information.
Yeah, I mean, the statute defines record fairly specifically, and it doesn't really, it says it, it does not include drafts, notes, preliminary computations, other materials from a group, for personal, person's personal use. It, it doesn't really apply to instructional materials, so I think, so most of those requests would be covered by a different policy. And then, yeah, we do, that's the one we're still working on.
So there would be, you envision a separate instructional materials policy?
Oh, there is, yeah, we have one now, but we're trying to fix it, because it's not good.
Right.
Separate from this, it's separate from this.
I mean, there's separate statute that covers, it's a separate issue, is an instructional materials request, it's separate from public records.
Right.
So parent is request, that's covered by different rules. For better or worse. Okay. Any other discussion on that? Well, that's easy. Future meetings. The, the annual meeting is October 3rd, coming up rather quickly. That's next week, right? 7:00 PM Wednesday, right here? Right here, well, out there. By that I mean the district office. And then there's referendum open houses and so on, and the next school board meeting is October 10th. Is there anything else to be aware of?
I gotta have a new.
We had two meetings canceled last week because of the lockdown due to the incident across the street.
I was gonna do it first, I was gonna try to do it, the two Wednesdays, you know, meetings, but now we have another meeting, so I gotta have another day, so, yeah. So I'll email everybody, figure out a time.
Okay.
I was thinking we had, oh, we don't need, we do have a meeting, so, I was thinking there, for some reason I was thinking there was another meeting we had to schedule, but.
We have a policy.
Yeah, we do have that, and we just had our meeting, so, yeah. Yeah, we do have that, and we just had our meeting, so, yeah, maybe that was it. I think we're good.
Okay.
Motion, you, Jerry?
I don't entertain those before 9:30, so we just have to sit here. I just.
Make up for it.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
This is 10 minutes to leave, add something to all.
That's right.
Let's make up for those who are there.
Wait, take.
Yes, that's right, it's not debatable.
Dean, tell us a story.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.